Good evening, that means we're ready to start. And welcome to the March 4th edition of the exciting Canyon City Council. And I hope you're all here for that, if not, please stay. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy.
Here.
Councilmember Maloney.
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Here.
Councilmember Stein.
Here.
Councilmember Tracy.
Here.
Councilmember Wellington.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Here.
Mayor Troutman.
Here.
Could we have Alicia Swerington do the invocation?
Yes, thank you. Lord Jesus, we just pause and take a moment to acknowledge your goodness in our community and all that you're doing here, and the good people that work here and serve here. Lord, we are so grateful. Lord, we pray that you'd given us all wisdom in how to be good neighbors and a good community. And we just acknowledge your presence here, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance is as follows. United States of America, and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I should turn my mic on, thank you. We have a period now for people to, citizens that would like to talk, address city council. And the first one is, is there a Dennis Weed in the house? Oh, hi Dennis. You're first.
Thank you for having me here. Hopefully, all of you got that little handout I had. I'm here to talk about stormwater fees. First of all, Canyon City has a couple of utilities. Stormwater is a utility, and municipal water is another utility. And they have nothing to do with each other. And it's my opinion, really, that they have no business being on the same bill. Because if I have an objection to part of my stormwater bill, I'll get dinged for not paying my water bill if I don't pay it. And I think that's wrong, because I have objections. Now, I don't think anyone here will disagree that an impervious surface means a surface that water cannot penetrate. Okay? So, good examples of things that are not impervious surfaces are dirt and loose gravel. And I'll get back to those later. Okay, so, this is gonna start out more personal, and this is gonna get very general. I have a property on East Main Street, and for at least 10 years, I've been charged for somewhere in the ballpark of 5,700 square feet of impervious surface. It actually has somewhere in the neighborhood of 3,000. And I contacted Glenda in stormwater, came out and measured it, and came up with another number. I'm not happy with it. Said it's 4,000. But it's still 1,000 more than it should be. So, somehow or another, I'm owed for 10 years' worth of paying double what I should've been paying in stormwater fees on just that one property. Now, the bigger problem here involves you, and me, and every single person that owns a structure in Canyon City. The handout I gave you, the first, the second one talks about impervious surface. What is it? It's something that water can't penetrate. We agree with that. Okay? Now, specific to me, I have, I have a rental property that has a cover that a car can go under. It's about eight feet wide and about 20 feet long, and underneath it is dirt. It's not, it's just dirt. Okay? I'm being charged for a stormwater fee for that. And you can't tell me that the rain that falls on that, falls on the ground, doesn't just go underneath and so, car still gets wet, it just doesn't get nailed by hail. Oh crap, I'm gonna run out. But this is the part you guys need to hear. It's the way impervious surface is measured. I had Glenda come out to my property on East Main Street, and we talked for, we probably talked for an hour. And we could not come to an agreement. But she insisted that impervious surface includes eaves. So, if you have a two-foot eve that goes all the way around your house, that's included in the impervious surface. The definition from the Canyon City Municipal Code is very, very clear, that the measurement of impervious surface is, quote, "between the exterior faces of walls, foundations, columns, or other means of support or enclosure." It does not include eaves. Seven or 8,000 property owners in this city, and about 1,000 commercial property owners for the last 20 years have been overcharged for their stormwater fees. And you know, I've got some personal issues about my stormwater fees and what I'm being forced to pay, and what I've had to do with my property to accommodate it. But this is every single property owner in Canyon City is being overcharged. And, straight from the municipal code. And I know the first response is gonna be, well, let's just change the municipal code so we can get off easy. That's not the answer. The definition of impervious surface does not include dirt. And that's what we're all being charged for. And it needs to get fixed.
Any questions?
Yeah, impervious surface. You're saying, in this caption here, that you underlined is impervious surface, there should be dirt in that? That's pervious.
No, that's what I'm saying. I'm being charged for dirt. All the way around, every house I own in town, around every building I own that has eaves, every garage, a carport that's, a little car shed that keeps it from getting hammered by hail and sun, it's got, it's dirt. The walls on it are this high. It just doesn't let the sun beat on it, and it doesn't let it get hammered by hail.
What is, what do you say about that? Is that something we need to take up and look into? Or, I'm not a fan of stormwater stuff.
Well, if you're asking my opinion, I'm quoting the code.
Well, it's not your opinion, it's actually written here, apparently.
It's written, yeah.
So, yeah, I'm not a real, I'm not a real advocate of the stormwater crap anyway, but, excuse me. I think we should probably look into it. I know we've had that discussion before, even when you were on.
Well, we've never had this discussion.
Well, not this one, but when you were on council, so, Tim.
Yeah, and just listening to this, I think it's something else we need to look into. If after all these years, we're reducing his stormwater square footage, but he's been paying for a higher number, you know, if, if it was myself, I would, I would say, you know, I've overpaid for 20 years, what are we gonna do? And I'm, I'm just saying, I think that's something we better look at. If we're charging, overcharging people, or it's been overcharged on their, on their estimates of what their properties are, I think we really better look at that. Thanks.
Kathy?
Just to get a clarification, Dave, is, when you're talking about eaves, that's the overhang from the roof, right?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so, impervious is your roof, and so, the eaves are part of the roof, so I'm just wondering if you're thinking about something different?
No, no. The definition, the measurement, it's on this paper, it's in the code. The measurement is from the faces of the external walls. It has nothing about eaves. It's very, very clear.
Anybody else like to ask Dennis a question? Is that a subject that you want to put on a government meeting, or have a discussion of?
And I'll just throw in here, like I was saying, the first solution you're gonna come up with is change the definition of impervious surface to somehow include dirt. And that's not right. And, yeah, if you're gonna say that the eve creates an impervious surface, then you're telling me houses don't need gutters, because that water doesn't affect their foundations. And that's ridiculous, and everybody knows that.
Okay. Amy, do you want to comment?
Yes, I was just thinking, it might be helpful to hear from the city administrator prior, I know it could take a while to get this on the general government agenda, so it might be helpful to hear an update from the city staff sooner than we discuss it. But I would be in favor of discussing it. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else wanna chime in?
I'm in favor of discussing it as well.
Andrea?
I, you know, I understand the process is, and I don't know what we have to do. We need to have a meeting where we talk to Glenda about what we have to do for, like, different grants that we have, and how, how did the state and the feds define this surface? And what I, I'll just make one comment from my own experience, is that I have people up the hill from me, and dirt is not an impervious surface, but it ends up in my yard, on, like, two feet deep next to my curb. So, I don't know whether that's factored in, because I'm not an expert on stormwater, but I don't know whether that's factored into that. But from the definition, we do need to look at it, because that doesn't make sense. I mean, I think a government, general government meeting might be, then we could have every, all the people in here that are, that are concerned with this, and ask our questions, and, you know, have Dennis come, if you wanna ask questions when we have the meeting too. So, but I do know, the whole impervious thing, there is a lot of damage that's done in this city by dirt that's just, you know, on people's property, that just rolls down into the gutters, into the city's systems. And so, there's probably something there that is part of the whole process of control, too. But we need to just look at it, talk about it.
Okay. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would say I'm, I'm in favor of discussing this again. This is, this is a subject with, with a lot of moving parts. There is, it's not a simple, straightforward thing. You know, Dennis, thank you for coming in. I have visited your property, and I have seen what the city has forced on you there, and I'm sensitive to that. But I would, but I would say, don't presuppose what we're, what we might do for solutions. You've identified a problem, that's fair enough, and that bears some discussion, and I think that, that we should.
And I would love to be part of, I have solutions, believe me. I had them 20 years ago when this started. I was on the council at the time. Just didn't do them. Okay, well, thank you for listening to me.
All right, thank you Dennis.
Yep.
All right, we have Deb Dewey. Is she here?
I am.
Okay, would you pull the microphone closer so we can hear you talk?
I'm Deb Dewey, I live at 1007 Ohio Avenue. And I actually have two subjects, I don't know if I get, there's not enough people here, I could have three minutes and three minutes, or I need to do one real quick and the other. So... Were you very loud? Oh, okay, well, sorry. I actually have two topics. One is on crime, and one is on sidewalks. So I'll just run through it really quick. Last weekend, I was robbed while I was out of town. They broke into my house, had the police over on Monday night. They would not take any fingerprints. It was cash that was taken, so there are no serial numbers, and apparently, nothing I can really do. But I've spent a ton of money with an electrician, and with a lot of floodlights and cameras, and it's gonna be a huge investment for me to feel safe so I can leave my home. I live by myself, and my daughter has literally called me, we usually talk maybe once a week, she's probably called me at least two or three times every day since this happened, texting me, calling me, "Mom, are you safe? Are you okay?" So I'm spending a ton of money on stuff I don't feel like I should have to. I understand that a police, a sheriff's vehicle was broken into down the street from my house at the annex, and a weapon was stolen, and I talked to the police about this yesterday. So I called to get, I don't wanna spread rumors, I called to find the truth. They got the weapon recovered, and the person is in jail. That's what I know. They don't do fingerprints. So on Wednesday morning, I'm in my yard, so that, I realized that on Monday, when I came home, Wednesday morning, I'm in my yard in the back, and there's a tarp up by the house. And I thought, well, it's been real windy, I better go fold that up. I whip up the tarp, and there's two crowbars there, and there're these water bottles, used to have water in them, now, I don't know if it's milk and Kool-Aid. I don't know who's robbing my house, okay? But obviously, the police are, they thought, you know, I step back, is that like a Molotov cocktail that I make somebody mad, or they're gonna blow up my house? I didn't know what it was. And we looked at it, and we figured it's probably milk and Kool-Aid, in water bottles next to crowbars. And I look up, and now I realize my back window there on that end of the house has been cracked. So now I have a broken window to deal with, as well as feeling comfortable in my own neighborhood and my home. I have talked to, that was Monday at 6:00, I started talking to neighbors then ASAP. I've been down both sides of the street, haven't talked to everybody, but the people that I have have either had their, I don't know if they're not locking, some they think are broken into, but they're open, and they're rummaging through their cars and their trucks, taking cash. I hope you guys are all aware of what's going on in our town, because everybody I'm talking to either has had it happen, or they know somebody who has. Okay? And then I found this about the police car down at the end of my block at the annex. So I'm a little upset about that. The second time he came, I said, okay, I really need fingerprints, because I need to know if this is somebody, I've been down here three years, I came down from Monument, because Monument got crazy. I used to ride my horse across I-25, I've been there since. My parents bought their property in '60. So I grew up in Monument, it's not my small town anymore. I came down here looking for a small town. And this is what I'm facing. So I, also, a lot of people I talked to, they didn't report it. They figured the police have enough on their hands, they didn't really steal much, but this and that, so they didn't report it. And that's why I think maybe some of the, some of the town doesn't realize how bad this issue really is. It's a lot worse than I think they might think it is. Okay? So that was, I think I kinda covered that. So I'd really like fingerprints. They, they won't do fingerprints, apparently, they have to send them up to Denver. So maybe we need to get somebody in Canyon that can actually do fingerprints for our town. Maybe we can share that with Florence and Penrose, I don't know. But they said, we can't do them, because we sent them up to Denver, and it takes so long, months and months, to get fingerprints back, that they're saying it's not worth doing.
Okay, we do have a time limit there.
I see that. I guess I have, did I go over 49, or I still have 49?
Yeah, that was the, we let you go a little bit over. We do know about, it was in the paper, actually, there was a column from our chief, and yes, crime statistics are up. Robberies and things of that nature are up, and so is the theft of firearms. We do know about it, we're doing what we can. And I think we can't be everywhere we'd like to be.
Right.
As far as the fingerprints, I don't know. We'll find out about that, and try and understand what that's all about.
Thank you.
It's probably expensive, and we need a tech to do it, and right now, we're short six to eight officers just in our force. So it's hard to get around for everything.
I understand.
But the crime statistics are up, and they have been up. And that was a column that was last week, I think, that the chief had written, and it was the front...
It was last Wednesday or Thursday?
It was on Thursday, it was the front page of the Daily Record. So we'll look into it. If we, I have your name and a phone number, if we can, do I have your phone number?
You do. You should.
I do.
If not, I'll be glad to give it to you again.
I know where you live, too.
Are you a neighbor?
No.
Okay.
I live out of town. No, I'm just kidding.
Is it possible, well, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I was joking.
Okay.
I was out of town, or they're gonna run me out of town. I'm not sure which one happens, but we will, we'll follow up on this.
On the fingerprint thing?
The fingerprint, yeah, I think that's probably a good point. We just don't have that, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there aren't that many people to speak, could I have one more three-minute option?
Well, it's the consensus of council, that would be up to council. Sure.
Different subject?
Go ahead, we will, we will time you.
Okay, this one is on sidewalks. So when I came down, my sidewalk was, it was dangerous out front, okay? And I was caring for someone, a friend of mine at the home, I designed a ramp and put that in, and then I literally just started tearing the concrete out myself. It wasn't an option to have it fixed financially. So I started doing it, I hired a couple people to break up pieces, literally, in 64 feet of concrete on my sidewalk, there were only about two pieces that were this big. The rest was just basically shattered. So I got a couple people to break that up, so I could get rid of that, too. It was a two-year project. I had, I think somebody reported me, because, let's see, was it Dan? No, Sam. So Sam came by last year, and we had a chat in the front yard. And it was very nice, and I said, so I, do I get a fine? And he said, no. And I said, do I have a certain amount of time to fix it? And he said, no. But he said, I do have a list of contractors that you have to go through the city, through, through the people that are on the list, to pick someone in order for the city to pay half. And I was under, and I don't know if Sam and I talked about this, but I was under the understanding from lots of people that the city pays half of, if you fix your concrete, you use someone they want you to, they come and approve it, it's good, you get the receipt, you submit it to the city, and in a couple weeks, you get a check for half of having your concrete fixed. Well, then, I talk more, and I don't think it's the actual half of the labor, I think it's just supposed to be half of the concrete. And so then, this week, I called a concrete guy, I thought, I'll get the jump on it, see how much it's gonna cost for an estimate, and I know a little bit about concrete, and if you do it in the hot summer, it maybe doesn't dry as strong, cure as strong. So I thought, maybe I could do it before it gets too hot. So a guy comes, and he gives me a quote of $3,800, and I'm asking him all kind of questions, because my driveway curb is here, and my driveway's here. So I literally have to come into my house like this to get onto the driveway. And this guy didn't know how to answer the questions. So he said, let me call the city. So Dan came out. I find out Dan's a neighbor 10 houses down, so now I know another one of my neighbors, nice guy, that was good. And he was very honest, and he goes, well, he kinda laughed when I said they pay for 50%. And he said, well, back in the day, they did. So apparently, the city went to Fort Collins and got an idea of how they did theirs, and that's how we mimicked Fort Collins. So back in the day, apparently, a square yard of concrete was $10. I'm, I'm estimating a bit, because the city would pay $4.95, which was supposed to be half of whatever the concrete was. Well, now, concrete is $220 a square yard, and the city is still paying $4.95. That's not much of an incentive to get your sidewalk fixed. So I called Fort Collins, and the guy called me back this morning, very nice gentleman, and he says that now, they don't actually do the shares thing. He says, what we do is, we try to fix our roads. In Fort Collins, every 20 years, we try to hit every road and fix it. The year before they fix it, they go down that road, and they look at the curb, the gutter, the sidewalk, the ramp, for, for on the corners where the ramps are. And if they need to be fixed, the city foots the bill, they have a fund for that, so they make sure that's all fixed, and then the next year, they come in and they do the street.
Okay.
So my sidewalk was seriously a safety issue. In fact, Dan, down the street, said that his son used to come down on his bicycle, he would get to my yard, my drive, my sidewalk, and he would get off into the street to ride his bicycle to get around my sidewalk.
Okay, we, we would, we'll have to investigate that. I was under the impression it was half, and I didn't know, is it? Can you comment on that, Ryan?
Yeah, it's, it's a 50/50 program, but there's a cap on the square footage, but we can look into that further and see what's going on there.
Okay, we'll do that.
Greatly appreciated.
We got your address.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Sure. We have, put my glasses on. Sorry. Is it Margie?
Margie.
Margie Jones?
Yes.
And, you wanna talk about sanctuary city? Okay.
Yes, it's pretty short. But I was just wondering, is Fremont County a sanctuary city?
No, Fremont, no, Canyon, we're, there's the county and the city. The city is not, and the county isn't either. And they have a resolution to that effect. And we're discussing working on a resolution for Canyon City.
Okay, that's it.
That's it?
Thank you.
Well, so I guess I have to talk the rest of the time. They are gonna run me off, I'm sorry. Okay, well, thank you. Let's move on. Are there any city council announcements? Emily?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, I wanted to mention two things. I won't go into much detail, but just wanted to let the community and council and staff know that the community members of the Community Advisory Group for the Lincoln Park Cotter Superfund Site remain concerned, and maybe it's a growing concern, that it seems to be in slow motion at the site during the, it's been more than a year now since the owner of the site declared insolvency. There's been some steps taken at the state and federal level, but basically, in a year, we're no farther along in terms of getting a proper assessment and an eventual cleanup done. So I just wanted to mention that, and stay tuned, we're trying to get some help on that. And then, I wanted to thank city administrator, in his written report, he mentioned an update in regard to the feasibility study for a community swimming pool. And I wanted to just mention specifically that the next public meeting in regard to that pool is this Thursday evening at 5:30, and it's an online meeting. And you can find information about that link on social media, and on the city's website, Recreation District, and so forth. But really, as usual, we're trying to encourage as many people as possible to be involved in these meetings regarding what kind of pool the community wants. Thanks.
Thank you, Emily. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, we do have a general government, I think it is, meeting here Wednesday. We're gonna be talking about feather signs, I believe. Oh boy, one of our favorite topics.
I think I was gone that day.
The, it might call in sick, is that correct?
I'm thinking about it, yes.
But we, that will be here in these chambers, starting at 6:00, I believe. And we do have, this Wednesday is coffee with the mayor, which I would be going to, except that we also have K-R-L-N that morning also. And so I'm looking for a partner to go to K-R-L-N with me, to appear on the radio.
Coffee, radio.
Yeah, I know, gee.
That's a tough one.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be on the short end of that stick, I'm afraid. Good grief. But nonetheless, if any other council members willing to come in with, at 8:30, we also probably need to have a larger discussion about the K-R-L-N, because it is monthly. When we had the previous mayor, Ashley Smith, she and I kind of traded off, and did every other month, but it's, and, and with my current situation, doing it every month is, is a little bit much. So we probably need to have a discussion about how we want to support that radio program or not.
Thank you.
And the other thing that I would say is, we don't have anybody from CDPE or EPA here to defend themselves on the Cotter site. I don't think it's appropriate to cast aspersions on the hard work that those agencies are doing, and the appropriate place to bring up those concerns are in the monthly CAG meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else for comments? Then let's move on to the consent agenda, and could I ask the city administrator to review the agenda and the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, item 7A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on February 19th, the vision meeting on February 21st, and the special meetings February 19th, which was an executive session, February 23rd, which was RGCA, and February 26th, which were interviews. 7B is authorize the mayor to sign an intergovernmental agreement with Fremont County regarding the use of asphalt emulsion. 7C authorizes the city administrator to sign a professional services agreement with Icon Engineering for the Eighth and Pine Ditch Crossing. 7D awards bid 2124 for an F-550 crew cab service work truck to Ken Garf Ford, and not to exceed $95,551. 7E ratifies the purchase of a 2016 Lincoln MKZ four-door sedan for the amount of $14,249. 7F declares a 2009 Dodge Ram 2500 pickup as surplus to be disposed of according to city purchasing policy. And 7G is to receive and file cash disbursements.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, let's, any discussions on that? Someone like to make a motion? Review the, for the consent agenda? a motion? Review the, for the consent agenda?
Are you going?
Just speak up.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the agenda and the consent agenda.
Second.
Second, any discussion on that motion? Anybody?
Second.
Wait a second.
Give us a second.
So, thank you. And we have no additions or corrections, then? Of course, we have none of that. And, um, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hemrick?
Aye.
Okay, item number nine is a discussion, and it's the introduction and adoption by title only. No?
City administrator's report first.
I thought he did. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Could we have an administrator's report? I'm not in a hurry or anything, so.
You, you have the, uh, written report in the, uh, in the packets. I'm not gonna go into detail unless there are questions about the, a written report. A couple of things that didn't make it into the written reports, uh, staff today met with the, uh, Parks Building Design Team to answer questions on the site plan and building layout. So that project continues to move forward. That's the relocation of, uh, the Parks Maintenance Facility from Centennial Park up to the Public Workshop up on Ninth Street. Uh, and then we also received our bids for New Method Laundry, uh, for the demolition of New Method Laundry. Uh, they're ranging from $560,000 to $884,000. Uh, staff has not had a chance to get into the detail of, of those bids, uh, but we, uh, wanted to let, uh, council know that those, those numbers have come in, they're higher than we anticipated, higher than the grant funding that we have. So we're gonna, we're gonna dig in deep on those bids and, uh, figure out, uh, what direction to move next.
Okay. Now, it's number nine. Would you have a question?
I did, I do.
Oh, there you are, yes, go right ahead.
Thank you, sorry, I didn't, I wasn't quick enough on the button there. The, what, what is the budget amount we've set aside for the new method demolition?
We, uh, we were planning on using what, uh, the leftover grant funds that we have in our, our brownfield grants, uh, which are roughly $390,000 at this point.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. I'll try and work through this, I have a cough this evening. And number nine is discussion, introduction, and adoption by title only, Resolution Seven, serves the 2024 entitle, a resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, supporting the grant application for a community impact grant from the State Board of the Great Outdoors Colorado Trust Fund, and the completion of Sid Canyon City Public Space and River Access. I would invite the city administrator to discuss that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, the resolution is, uh, prior to our application for, uh, GOCO, Great Outdoors Colorado, uh, Grant Round. Uh, we are seeking, and this needs to be corrected in the resolution when the, the motion is made, $812,800 from GOCO. Uh, this is to fund the purchase and the planning and design for the old WN Clark Station property. Uh, this is something that's been in the Arkansas River Corridor Master Plan and the city's comprehensive plan for many years. And, uh, we are finally at a junction where we can acquire that property, uh, with, uh, the, with the potential of this funding. Uh, we do have Grant Writer Brandy Sheets and Economic Development Manager Rick Harmon here to also answer questions.
Any questions of council? Any concerns? Mr. Hemrick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a comment, and that, that, this is the reason we're seeking these funds, is because the city and Black Hills have reached tentative agreement on purchase of the property.
Yes, sir. We have a, a signed letter of intent, uh, while the two parties are negotiating the purchase and sale agreement.
Thank you.
Tim?
And, and I just wanna make sure, just, just long for public, you know, you know, right now, we're just trying to do this so that we can apply for this grant. You know, this is not coming out of the city pocket, and I just think it's important that our residents know that.
Yeah, that, uh, several years ago, Black Hills did donate money to the city, uh, for the sale of water rights. And we, and, uh, the city has earmarked those funds for future, uh, improvements to that site, and, uh, we've earmarked those as matching funds for this, uh, for this grant.
Okay, anyone else? Hearing none, could I have a motion and a second?
Yes. Um, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, recommend and make a motion that we approve the resolution for the grant process with, uh, this GOCO, and, uh, for the future purchase of the land.
If you could do that with the, uh, adjustment of $812,800 to the second we're asked, please.
I'd be glad to, since I didn't spit out the first part very well. So anyway, I am making a motion to approve this resolution, and, and for the grant, uh, application of $812,800 in order to purchase and plan for the property of the Clark Station.
Second? Emily, or was it Emily or John?
Emily.
Emily, she got there first, huh?
Yeah, great.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
Yes.
Yes, go right ahead.
The resolution says $802,000?
That was the correction that, uh, Councilmember Worthington just made.
Thank you.
Any questions? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hemrick?
Aye.
Well, thank you, that was a short agenda. Amy, how are you doing?
I've been better, but I'll be better tomorrow.
Well, we're thinking about you and hope you heal well. You'll be back here
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Soon, so. Any discussions? I do think the radio program, I would like to go next time. I had scheduled at the Steeple's for the Coffee with the Mayor. I'll move that date, so in April, I, if you'd like, I would like to attend, and, uh, try that, so.
I'm also happy to help out more in the future. I, I don't wanna promise for this Wednesday, um, but for future ones, I'm happy to help as well. Thanks.
Well, thank you, Amy. And Tim also volunteered? You did volunteer, Tim. Yes, he did, thank you. So let's adjourn this regular city council meeting, and we'll see you March 18th. Thank you.